Replaces the one that was in there? They get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Request approve the October twenty second, twenty twenty five city council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion to pay the bills.
Um, I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, new business. Approved resolution twenty five dash nineteen declaring vacancy in office of mayor. Appointment to mayor and vacancy of council respectively.
Okay, so is this for both seats or this is just for mayor?
Just the one.
Just the one, okay.
The other one will be done after Joe's, the December thirty, it'll be done in January. This is in the thirty first of December.
Even though, even though.
We don't have a meeting after that?
We'll have a meeting January. You can't, you can't announce the vacancy until it is vacant, I guess, so, yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion, resolution.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. For resolution twenty five dash nineteen. Alright, next one is the oath of office for the mayor.
I already filled in your name. So if you would like to read it yourself, you sure can, please raise your right hand. Would you like to say it or repeat after me?
I Chris Schmidt do solemnly swear to affirm to support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of Minnesota and all the laws, ordinances and resolutions of the city of Goodview and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of mayor for the city of Goodview, in the county of Goodview, in the state of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you.
Go ahead and get the nets to the back so then you can suck it.
Yeah, just let me know, um, when to come down, so. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, so the next. We're gonna talk about the Trinity Church water issue.
Yes, if you're all ready for him to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep.
Well, just praise God that we're living in a democracy that is alive as well. Want to thank all the veterans and military men and women who serve our country so that we can live in a democracy that can resolve issues through dialogue and kind of clarification. So I'm here to seek clarification and maybe some resolution with regard to the situation that I found myself in recently. Um, I would, I'm used to opening up the mail and finding the bill for the Holy Trinity water bill and it was fine for a while and then it kicked off to a hundred dollars. And I started kind of wondering what was going on. Jason came by and we saw that there might, there might be a leak, we couldn't really find anything. So I kept my ears and eyes to where I could see kind of like the toilets, that's really the toilets and the faucets, that's basically what we had. We don't have any laundry, we don't have any people showering there, we don't have a kitchen to speak of, we just basically have toilets and seats. So, um, it turns out that I'm kind of watching the bills and the bills kind of go back to normal, but then I get stuck, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, oh, twelve months, uh, later I get this huge bill and it doesn't make sense to me because the, the reporting is such that, um, apparently there was just kind of, uh, the usage was being estimated and, uh, the, the readings, um, just were kind of being estimated and so there, there seems to be, uh, a sense of like, okay, we were estimating, but it really should be this actual. And we, we got hit with, uh, like five hundred, uh, like five hundred thousand and four gallons of water than we were used to. So the bill was quite high, instead of a bill, a, a monthly bill of, uh, let's say eighty-eight dollars in, uh, May of twenty four, and then it jumped up to a hundred dollars in May of twenty four. Uh, that's when this, Jason has written a little article or a little letter saying that we put in a, a new, um, meter. I, I didn't know, I wasn't really aware of that, but, uh, and then it kind of went normal, uh, and then it jumped up again. And so I was looking around and I found that there was a kink in the chain where the flapper is in one of my toilets. I thought, well, that might be the culprit and I, I was able to fix it and I thought the park problem was resolved because of the bills coming in at a normal rate, a hundred four dollars, a hundred four dollars, um, a hundred nine dollars, a hundred three dollars. But then I got a bill of a thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. So after twelve months of thinking that I had solved the problem, apparently there was just kind of a goodwill gesture on the part of the city to say, okay, we're just going to give the usage of five thousand until an unknown date. And I guess that date arrived then on August of twenty seven, twenty twenty five, when I was given this bill of, you know, a thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. So I called a plumber and he couldn't really find anything too serious. There was some leakage, but the problem is I didn't know about that leakage because for twelve months I was given this, uh, rate of a normal rate. So for twelve months I thought I had resolved the problem and then all of a sudden it was just added up, all these days were kind of added up and I was given, you know, this huge water bill. And I called around, I called other churches, I called residential's and they're about a hundred dollars and they have people living their homes, they're showering every day, they're laundering, you know, every other day or whatever and it just, bigger churches are about a hundred dollars and we don't have a very big church. I mean, I've got two other churches to try to manage and we've got people there as well. So it's, it just seems to me that there's, there needs to be clarity around how we go about billing, uh, residents and, and, uh, public or worship, uh, churches. Uh, so I guess I, I want to try to figure out if we can, uh, have some sort of agreement that this was not the way to handle it and maybe we could give some recompense or some sort of credit because as I see it, the, uh, the estimates were not, that, that was not my, that was not my problem. And I don't, I don't understand why, uh, all of a sudden without kind of any conversation, I was given this huge bill because all of a sudden everything seemed to be added, added up. So, um, is there, is there a way, is there, I, again, I'm, I'm here to seek clarification and just try to figure out if there is in the policies of this city, a certain way where I can get, um, resolution to this, this problem and maybe get some credit for my water bill that seemed to be way, way very high compared to what it normally should be.
So, some of this is not what we were told, so let me ask a couple of questions here.
Sure.
So were you told that you had a leak, yes or no?
You said that there might be a leak.
And, and when was that?
Um, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
I was there, I remember it. I was in there the summer of.
Early summer twenty twenty four.
Early summer twenty twenty four, yeah, cause prior to twenty twenty four in March, there was never a meter in the church.
Right.
So, once twenty twen- March came, it was in April.
You put in the meter.
Yeah, put in the new meter and that new meter is electronic, so it can read, will the handheld read it? But we also went down to the meter and you could see that the meter was spinning because it says there was water going through it.
Well, I was, I was with you and there was someone in the office that could have been using the toilet.
But they weren't, because we checked, remember?
Well, oh, okay, but that, okay, that's true, but we, we went around and it, it, it stopped, it stopped. So we went around and checked to see if there was any leak and there was no leak.
But you did have a leak in the sink and you did have a leak in that toilet downstairs at that time.
Well, it wasn't running because you said it was, nothing's running right now. And we went out, we went outside to check to see if maybe it was an outside's kicking and those were, those were dry.
But then you, the meter still said it had a leak on it, then it went, now correct me, Lori, because we both worked on this, right? Then it was good for a while and then the last month of July, so it was, or the August, that's when I read the meters and it said there was a leak on the handheld and when you looked it up onto the software, said there was a leak on there also, so that's when you got the higher bill. So sometime between when I was there and another time, there was a leak somewhere in the system, that's how it racked up them extra gallons.
So I was, I was in that building looking and looking and I thought I fixed a, a, a little problem.
Okay, so you didn't call a plumber?
No, I didn't, not at that time. And here's, here's what we have here is about a year of estimates. And so that's when I'm going off of like, okay, I have resolved this situation and, um, then all of a sudden I get this huge, this huge bill.
So you got that huge bill because you had a leak?
Well, that wasn't indicated though and no one, no one told me about it because you, you can't expect me to, uh, receive these bills that everything is fine and all of a sudden, oh, we're gonna charge you because you had a leak for about a year and we're gonna, we're gonna add everything up and boom.
Well, that doesn't, oh, sorry.
Sorry, so your position is nobody told you you had a leak, that, that's your position?
That's my position because I fixed what I thought was the problem and it seemed to indicate that for the bills coming in for a whole, uh, about at least eleven months.
So I, so from the time that Jason went out there on April eighth and installed the, the meter, from April eighth until September first of twenty twenty five, that was what, sixteen months, fifteen months?
But the meter was installed in twenty twenty four.
Correct. And this bill that it says here for the eighteen ninety was September first, twenty twenty five, so from April of twenty four to September twenty five, what were you paying every month? Was it like, cause you, you, you pay based off what the, the reader's saying, right?
That's right.
The difference in, in what your meter said the month before to what you currently have, so.
I see what you're saying, so yeah, I see what you're saying, so in all of twenty twenty four, after this meter went, it's one oh four, 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 one oh, so why would it, you know?
It was still estimated.
It was still estimated.
It wasn't actual.
So why, why would it have been estimated when the meter was installed in twenty twenty four?
There were a lot of estimates done.
There was a lot. So you can have a leak though in a month's time, like run up a lot of water.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but that bill, Victor wasn't in accumulation.
It was the one month that it showed up on that reader, you know?
It was in an accumulation or going backwards.
You know, but every month that, that was only being estimated at five thousand, it could have been ten thousand or fifteen thousand, but.
Okay, so the issue isn't about the meter, the issue is that you were being charged for estimated water for all of twenty twenty four, pretty much, and halfway into twenty twenty five, I think is the actual issue. Is that a correct statement? So how would he have known he had a leak, I guess?
Jason indicated that he stopped in the, the church and told office staff.
I did one other time throughout the summer, must have been. I guess I didn't write it down what day, it was probably sometime in summer.
If you have a leak, your bill should be higher.
Right.
I mean, that's, that, that's just an extrapolation.
Because the thing still said it was, had a leak in there, because it reads it, when you read it, it'll say leak.
And I guess what I'm, what I'm confused about is I'm just confused how this software was reading an even number of five thousand, two, three, four.
It wasn't, it wasn't estimates.
We estimated the five thousand because I thought hopefully that's a high number because it was.
So the estimation was wrong.
Extra high and we were hoping that they would find their leak and then hopefully the next month we'd find a reading that was better and it just kind of kept estimating and, and act finally said, let's just get the bill to them because if we don't, it's gonna keep estimate, es- escalating and, and the leak is gonna, it's gonna keep going along, so.
I'm sure it caught up.
Once you get that bill then, that's when the leak gets fixed, right?
Uh, that's correct, but that, that, that would have been, so if you're saying that it was, uh, five hundred thousand gallons of water, that's a huge amount. We would have, we would have seen something, I would have heard something, I was, I was watching, you know, I was kind of looking around for something, but that's a lot of water.
Cause like even, even in April, after the meter was put in, it shows that, you know, fifty one ninety seven was the usage and then the next month it says five thousand, like.
Cause they wrote in an estimated.
Right.
More than that when we were.
And then July and August, it's a.
So I guess what I'm confused about is, okay, so if the reading was higher than that and then we estimated it to be lower, to be fair, why are we then billing them for what the total was when we shot ourselves in the? to be fair, why are we then billing them for what the total was when we shot ourselves with what to begin with?
Well, I think too, we were having a lot of meter reading issues with the accounts and not sure if that was considered one of them, two at the time.
Right, that one was not.
Is this one of the mistakes that, you know, something's not right in the system? So after more investigation of the other accounts that have had some issues and this one, it, it didn't have any issues and it was the actual usage that went through the meter.
I think this is a whole bunch of stuff that went wrong all at once.
I think there's a correlation of things that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and, and I mean also, it's also my understanding that you did, that, that the church never received any water bills. And is this an accurate statement?
Well.
For fifty five months from.
No, we, we received water bills and we were paying them.
But not on water, just on.
Just on connection.
Connection. So you didn't have the usage from twenty eleven to twenty eighteen?
So I look at what they paid me here, the readings are for five thousand, five thousand, five thousand. So that's, that's what I'm going after, usage, they got usage here, so.
No, I'm just saying this, this happened in from twenty eleven to twenty eighteen.
I guess going back further, what we have, what we have in front of us here is.
You got free water for.
It is from twenty eleven to twenty eighteen, it was estimated of twelve thousand gallons per month was used to calculate your bill. Um, from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three, there was fifty five months where it was estimated at zero, meaning they were only built for your connection and no water service. I, I guess the problem is, is we can't look at that and go, they got free water, we gotta charge them now for it. That's not our, that's not our problem, that's water under the bridge. So, yeah.
Right, I'm just saying, I mean, everybody is.
So I, I think i- i- in my eyes here, I think there were a lot of things that could have gone differently. And I, I feel almost inclined to to agree that we can't just throw eighteen hundred dollars at someone.
I'm assuming the reason the water got so high was because it caught up at that last bill from all the prior months.
Correct, I'd be interested to see, do you have the data to show what you were actually reading through those?
I can go back, I can go back sixty and I.
Sixty, no.
Thirty days, I went back thirty from the last month, I can't go back more than that.
You can only go back for one month?
On the thing.
On the software, okay.
And he's been normal since then, so. Normally since it's got caught up.
What are you looking for the city to do here?
Well, I, I just think it.
You're looking for some sort of resolutions, I think so.
Correct. Clarity, more clarity, like a policy that says you've got to give the, the owner, you gotta talk to me when you put a meter in, you got to say, hey, this is high and we're gonna put it on your bill. Um, so that I can, I can figure out what's going on. But then the, you know, the usage, so if you, if you're putting down five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, that means somehow you can put down whatever number you want and I don't want it that way. Cause I don't know if these other higher numbers are accurate. So I'm just kind of wondering, how, how do we resolve this? I guess I'm gonna be watching that water meter a lot more closely now that I know how to read it. But I, I just think it's um, you know, uh, we, we have to have better policy, I think.
But when you say policy, what do you mean by that?
Well, I mean that there should be a policy where if there is a higher reading or usage, that bill goes to the owner so they can address the issue right away instead of getting hammered a year later with a huge bill.
I think, I think, I think the word policy might be too much, might be too much. I think, I think what we're trying to think here is um a new procedure. Where when it gets to a certain number, look into it. I guess my biggest thing here is it was estimated for like twelve months and I don't, I mean, I know me as a homeowner, like if my bill comes in super high, I've got questions, right? I'm gonna start looking for leaks or whatever it may be, like I did this last time. But for my bill to come in and see an even number of whatever for twelve months, I'm gonna raise a question. But at the same time, like I think as the city, we should have been more informative and more correct on this to say, hey, like there's something wrong. But at the same time, as a homeowner or a business owner, they should have came down to the city within the last twelve months and said, why are these numbers estimated? Like.
Why would I get the same number every month?
Yeah.
The thing is, I didn't know that they were being estimated.
You probably had someone, some church staff paying the bills and, and no one was noticing it or something and.
I looked at the bill and I have the one that says it looks pretty normal. I mean, we have a fairly normal activity.
Yeah, a hundred and five dollars or whatever, it looks pretty normal.
From eighty eight to hundred, to two twenty nine to hundred and four, I'm like, yeah, okay. Yeah, there might have been some extra, but then, but then when it was two thirty, that's why I said, wait a second. And that's when I kind of started asking questions and then went back to, you know, a hundred and four, a hundred and four, a hundred and four. And I didn't, I didn't know exactly what to be looking for, quite frankly. It's, it's a fairly, you know, there's tier one, tier two and all these numbers that I just kind of struggled with. But um, yeah, as I, as I got out of community, just asked other people, their, their bills are like, one church is about a hundred dollars a month. And residential homes are, you know, not, not that high. And they're, again, they're, they're showering, they're cooking, they're, and we just, you know, we don't have that huge of uh usage. So, I mean, so I think procedures, maybe policy was a little strong.
Right, right, I get what you're saying.
But yeah, procedures would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean.
We have to take, we have to talk about this.
Yeah, at least like, you know, let somebody know something before we throw almost a two thousand dollar bill. It's, and that, you know, and that's not just because it's a church, I mean, anybody, you know, I would expect some sort of courtesy at my house if, you know, I had an uptick in, in uh, in bills, but.
Yeah.
The only thing I'm gonna add is when you say you didn't realize the meter was installed, you, you let me in the door to do it. Cause we did it down in the basement and the church was locked. So, I, cause I remember you being there, because we installed it, there was never one in there.
There was never one in there, okay.
No, and that was in April.
I don't remember that.
Yeah.
I don't have a great memory sometimes.
Well, you got a lot of stuff going on, but.
Yeah.
So I just.
But then you, you, you set, you put it in there.
We installed it, yep, it started working. We had a leak for a while, it didn't come back. This summer it came back again, I did stop at the church and talked to one of the staff once, they said they were gonna let you know and I didn't hear anymore. So I'm like, well, it must have got it taken care of, so.
How accurate are these readers?
Accurate.
They're accurate, um honestly, water meters as they age, they become less accurate. They become less accurate in the term of the homeowner because they don't read as efficient. So there's water slipping past them, so if you ever say, oh, my water meter's not reading right, I want it replaced, don't do it. You're getting, you're getting the fair end of the deal, not the city.
You don't wanna put an old, yeah.
You don't wanna replace it, so.
Cause then you'll get more. And this one's an E series one, so this one reads with a magnet or a laser.
Okay.
Instead of a disc.
So it's not.
Yep, but it has been resolved, I checked it every day this week, three times last week, there is no more leak. The only thing I'll add is, we did have a plumber contact us about the church and he said he found a pressure problem. Talk to Lori, that was about in September, wasn't it?
So they need like an R P C put in or what?
No, there was, you were, he took the call because he called me.
Yeah, I had this machine or whatever on the pipe in one spot and said, but I'm not finding a leak. In our meter readers, getting all these numbers and he said, well, hold on just a minute. And then he moved it to a different pipe and he said, there's another pipe going off and there's definitely a leak there, so. Other issues, I'll give you a call.
Was something fixed?
Yes, I mean, he did replace some things, but at first he couldn't really find anything. Uh, then I said, well, we do, you know, the, one of our sinks, if you don't shut it off correctly, it'll leak. And so I said, work, you know, fix that and fix a little kink that I thought I had fixed. I said, might as well replace that too.
And that fixed everything?
Well, um, I hope so.
Well, I monitored it the last couple of weeks, every, not every day, but every couple, and it has not been leaking now. It's been, since the plumber's been there, it's been remedied, so.
I'd be interested.
It'll show up again if you have a problem. I think the best, moving forward, instead of going inside, I, I think maybe just direct communication with you and say, hey, it's got a higher water usage than normal.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful.
So that's probably how we're gonna approach it.
But I mean, that, that's just a huge, that's just a huge number where I just, you know.
Well, it's a huge number for anybody, really.
Right, and because it's, it seems like it can uh, the, the readings are put in there manually. I mean, then all of a sudden, boom, it, it jumps up, that, that must have been put in manually then. So I, I don't know, it just seems like it should be a little bit more accurate and because I mean, if this is the report, then somehow we need to be, I, I think we should still get some sort of credit for uh, you know, this is, it's just a huge amount of, of water in that one month. And I, I, I just know that it wasn't, you know, in September, we weren't, it wasn't in my mind, there wasn't any leak, any more leaks.
So was that eighteen hundred and ninety bill been paid?
I did pay it right away, did this, yeah.
Okay.
Because I, I'm a person that says, okay, pay the bill and try to resolve it. I didn't wanna hold on to it because I didn't, I, I've got a part-time bookkeeper. So, you know, it's kind of hard to hold on to things, so I wanna get it uh squared away as, as quickly as possible and then try to clear, clear things out. So.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about it.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
We'll talk about it.
Great, yeah, I appreciate it, thank you for your time and your efforts. I, I really appreciate people who are involved with public service. I am also a public servant and um it's very challenging at times. But it is such a blessing to, to be here and be able to work through things and kind of find a resolution that's, that's fair and that will hopefully um kind of mitigate any other miscommunications or, or other problems. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next one is gonna be the resolution twenty five dash eighteen. The final tax levy for twenty twenty six. Do you got any questions?
The last preliminary said a ten, you cannot go up. We can keep it the same or you can go down. And I have the five percent, seven percent, ten percent on the final budget, whether it could be increased or added to.
I'm, I'm gonna make a comment. I, I'm troubled by the comments that were in these reports about fund balances and um financial filings not matching. I, I'm, I'm really struggling with the levy when, when I kind of feel like we, we don't have a handle on our books. I don't know if I'm the only one that feels that way. I just don't know if we have a handle on it and, and I don't know if we are, because I mean, we were like a hundred and seventy K over our budget from last year, which I get, right? I, I guess I'm just not comfortable, like when there's statements like we have to go through twenty years of expenses and distributions. Our general ledger doesn't match from twenty twenty three. I, I guess, I, I don't know what getting these books in order looks like. But, but I guess that's where I'm struggling on, on, do we even know the money that we have? Before we just vote for a levy? Cause that's what we've always done, I mean.
We do now, but looking back, I noticed there was no balancing. So when I started here to bounce and close out the year end, I was working to try to get it as, I had four days to do it. Second year of twenty twenty two. And I didn't, I was stressful in the months over there.
Okay.
The budget that was produced for this coming up year are actual numbers, not based on what was in it. This is what's coming in that next year and what's going off next year. I can fix all of that from the past, it's really just verifying, we got the money in, it was allocated into the wrong fund and not incorrect amounts for the bond payments, the tax levies that were coming in.
Well, that's.
The special assistance, but this is general fund. This balancing is for general.
Right, that, that's on, okay, even, even the general fund, right? I, I guess, so, so you're, you, you're confident that the general fund books are in order?
The general fund is good, it's getting the bonds, the uh special assessments, all the ones that go into other accounts outside of the general fund.
So you're not concerned that we were a hundred and seventy thousand dollars over budget this year?
That was because I paid off a bond early.
Well, no, that's not, right, and, and.
That money and it was seventy three thousand dollars over. And there wasn't any allocations for capital improvement funds, that wasn't in there last year that I put in this year. There wasn't any savings account last year, it was the year.
Right.
And the TIF was unknown last year, that is now in there, so that would find the difference and.
Well, no, that's only ninety six K of it.
Twenty five thousand, ten thousand and forty four thousand?
Well, that doesn't add up to one seventy.
And the seventy three that I paid on the bond early, so we wouldn't have it next year.
Okay. So run the, give me those numbers again? Cause it was the TIF, right, it was CETA, it was the transfer to savings.
Those things that are last, um, twenty five thousand for capital.
Right.
That was a transfer to savings account that wasn't double one. Fifteen six oh seven for CETA.
Right.
Forty four thousand, one, four sixteen for last year and that wasn't a correct number, I was told that that is, because it started twice a year, not once a year. So now it's ninety nine thousand instead of forty four thousand for twenty twenty six.
Okay. And we were over on public works, correct? Did you budget for public works last year?
Ninety five, eighty five thousand and yes, over ninety one three. That one was over, public work. Ninety one thousand, three hundred and fifty was proposed or budgeted.
Okay. And what about legal?
Legal is one budgeted seventy five and we spent twenty seven. Um, we had, I had to review TIF, we had to review the saving and we updated the employee handbook, which was extremely outdated and we had to get it updated, so those things all happened.
We went from six pages to probably twenty five, we all worked on that. Yeah, a lot, I mean, I'm just using that as an example.
There wasn't anything in the handbook.
Nothing.
Pertaining to current laws.
Hmm. So we spent twenty seven, three on legal so far this year, is that, is that, is that correct? So on a budget of one point two, we spent one point three.
From twenty proposed to twenty twenty five actual.
So your comments in the, in the, in the. So your comments in the, in the, in the minutes about the, it doesn't affect the general ledger then?
It is not the general ledger, no.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that clears that up. So I'm willing to go five percent on the levy. I'm also not comfortable that it's just me and Michael, so, but I really can't do anything about that. It's a heavy weight to carry. I thought he didn't get to vote.
He, he votes. He votes also.
Oh. Oh, I didn't know that.
If there's a tie, he breaks it.
Yeah, I agree with five.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to have the twenty twenty-six levy be five percent.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, next. Uh, Resolution certifying pass due to utility billing to the Goodview County Auditor. Most, all of you guys got this, uh, special assessment.
My packets all over the place.
The same sheet.
Yeah, okay.
There was one renewed from what you initially got to today.
Oh, the top one, yeah.
Which one?
The top one.
Zero, this one? Okay.
Yeah, the one that's like five hundred bucks, yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution twenty-five dash twenty. Water rates for three years. So water rate set for three years.
Jason, I just recommended that we chat about water rates.
We're not making a motion tonight.
No, it's just, uh, just to talk about setting them.
I guess, uh, if you're all right with that, I think we should push it to the back of the meeting.
Yeah.
To December?
Yep, because I got some more information today.
Oh, okay.
So. If that's good with you guys.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
All right, we'll push the water rate till, take up till December.
December twelfth or thirteen, fourteen.
Something around there.
Something like that. All right, next, uh, CETA renewal discussion. I think that's Eugene, maybe?
Yeah, what, what was it this year?
It's going to be next year, sixteen four hundred, sixteen thousand four.
And when do we have to let them know by?
We haven't even got the contract yet.
Okay, can we push that to December as well?
We just paid the fourth quarter one.
Yeah, and, yeah, okay, perfect.
Sorry, what was the propos, what was the twenty twenty-four pricing? Or twenty twenty-six pricing?
Sixteen thousand four hundred a year.
I'm gonna push that to December.
Yep.
No worries. All right, uh, approve the gambling application for the Goodview Community Fund.
Um, oh, oh, you're gonna talk? Oh.
The community fund is looking through raffle to benefit the girls' basketball.
Awesome.
Any questions about this? So you're looking at doing the drawing, January fifteenth, the drawing would be at the school at home game.
You said January fifteenth?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I can. Hello, I'm Ava Walker. I'm representing the Goodview Girls Basketball. Um, we're looking to get our raffle approved. Um, we hope to sell a thousand tickets, twenty dollars each. Um, it would be a fifty-fifty payout. Um, as he already said, this would happen January fifteenth of twenty twenty-six. As far as what we'd use this money for, um, firstly, we use it for all of our apparel and gear. Um, we have undershirts, which are grays, that seven through twelve fit, as well as practice jerseys. Um, and we also enter in-season and out-of-season tournaments that we have to pay to get entered into, as well as we do a trip to Wisconsin Dells, which is another tournament, um, for ninth through twelfth graders.
Awesome.
Great.
Perfect job. I see a future in politics for you. I'll make a motion to approve the gambling application.
All right, we'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. There you go.
Great job.
All right, next is the, approve the twenty twenty-six agreement state building code administration.
This is done yearly. It's the same terms of, uh, wording as we've had in the past.
So I guess one question I had is, so this is like, oh, it's just a state, they were, the administration part, what is that?
They, they do it.
Okay. So this is just the state building code?
They administer it, they do the follow-up, the assignments and the process and lots. That is over the coming summer.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, twenty twenty-six state building code administration.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck. Have a, have a great season.
All right, next is motion to document and correct fund balances and refund school, refund school for.
Well, we had found that the meter reading for them was out of whack. And between Lori and Dixon, we determined that when the water meter was switched, it was switched from cubic feet to gallons, but in the software, at the time that it was installed, it was changed to gallons, and it was measuring their cubic feet. And it was charging them. It was the rate conversion to seven point four. Thank you. And it was timing the gallons by that and billing them on that inflated rate. So they found it, believe me, there's been a lot of things that these two have been fixing, one by one, getting the list fixed. This is one that was found. It inflated the rate that they were charged. Uh, when they found it from the last meter reading, I immediately went over to Evan and told him that that is what happened and that it was going to be a refund based on the charges that were overcharged. So I calculated it. I went back from twenty twenty-two, and it was determined that it was when the, the water meter was put in, and it was not changed in the software. Of four, of twenty twenty-two is when it happened. So I went through and got the actual reading, what it should've been. And since the overage also triggered SOR, I had to go through SOR and what it should've been. And since the reading triggered more taxes, another tax and what it should've been. And I have the grand total here that we will be cutting the check to the school to make this clear, to even it up. Give them back the overage. And when it was caught, Lori changed it in the system, and the meter that, reading that they had for this month was accurate, and it was much less because it wasn't being timed by that.
So this is unrelated to the last issue?
I mean, go ahead.
On my side, when you read it, it was correct. It was in the software, the billing software. That's where we caught it, because we caught it, was it last month?
It was the Thursday of the year.
Thursday. We said this isn't right, so we looked into it, because the bills print automatically, they go through. My side said it was always fine. We caught that it was not entered correctly years ago.
And they didn't ask any questions?
I get that, that, I mean, we're going, but we're going back. This is, I mean, I, I guess where I'm struggling is how could this have gone on since twenty twenty-two?
Because you never look into that aspect of the software.
Right.
Nope.
And that's number one. And number two, i- is he willing to ma, I mean, do we have to pay him all the, the fifty-eight K upfront? Or can we do it in, like, three years at zero interest? Or, I mean, it's just a lot.
It, it is, and, and we are able to do it. I, I read, I said, I don't really think you want to have this much of a credit and work off it, because that'll, that'll make their budgeting for the next three years out of whack. So we can do it. It, it, it's their money. I think we, we, we have.
I know, I understand that.
We have that in there to be able to, the bulk of it was in water, but they did tr- trigger some SOR charges.
So what is in the water account?
There is.
Because, I mean, it's not.
This water is, it's a mess. Well, and also to that, while, while she's looking that up, I'd also like to understand, what happened to the utility bills this month?
What?
Because when we got our wa, when we got our bill, it didn't include our SOR. So then, so was that everybody in Goodview got the wrong bill? Okay, so how does that happen?
That was the one that went out email before I printed on it. When I printed it, I caught it, saw that it didn't.
Okay, so only the people that got emails got the wrong bills. Okay.
Okay, I understand. I didn't even notice the wrong bill.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's on.
It's up in the middle of the month, and it caught that date.
Okay. So it's only the people that, okay, okay, well, that, that makes me feel better.
They got stopped before it went out.
Okay. Okay, well, that makes me feel better.
I opened up all four hundred and forty-four envelopes, took a bill, bill, and refolded it and put it in.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better.
Uh, water has two hundred and thirty-eight thousand six eighty-nine in it.
But it doesn't, because it would be two thirty-eight, whatever less the sixty is, right?
Oh, that, I'm sorry. I was answering Michael's question. He's, what's in it now? I was answering his question.
So that's what's currently sitting at, at the moment.
But we still owe them water, but I, I thought we were running a negative, right?
Not in the water.
Not, not in the water. Water and sewer ha, by law have to be on their own fund. They cannot be, uh, in the general fund. Water and sewer has to pay for water and sewer. That's all they can pay.
They can't pay for anything else.
So that's why, like, Jason and Todd, and I'm assuming you two, have a little bit of water and sewer, because that's what you work with, but it's a, it's a small percentage.
Okay, so our income was two twenty-nine, our disbursements were three seventy-four, right? I'm, I'm reading your report.
That was, that was.
So, so the fund, right, but the fund had a starting balance of three eighty-six.
Correct, because that's what's carried over from the prior years.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Pay three eighty-six and two twenty-nine.
Taking approximately.
Three forty-seven.
One, two, three to twenty-five a month in water. So two months.
I see.
Would take care of this, and it would be done. I mean, I, I'm comfortable with doing it, but you guys are the one that has to.
I, I guess another question is, what, I mean, how many other accounts are sitting out there like this? I mean, are there a lot?
I don't think there's many after this week.
Went through everything. Uh, what day was it?
So we're not gonna be caught unawares?
We hit the software for the hardware.
People come.
People come last week, and they spent the whole day with them trying to figure out and fix these things, because this has been ongoing.
That was the, like, nine hundred dollars for them to come out and teach you how to use the software and everything fully?
He, he went with account by account.
We went through every account, and I spent days last week going through each in persons.
Yes.
Because you can log in. Each person has a ticket. I sorted them. She was with us. We sorted out, went through all of them. I'm assuming.
What's your confidence?
My confidence is ninety-eight percent. We got them all.
I love it. I love it.
Doing that the last two weeks.
And then it's not like that for the past year.
The last year.
How many did we, did we find more?
We probably started with, what do you think, Lori? Sixty to a hundred?
Issues?
With issues when you started?
Yeah, oh, when I started.
Yep, and we got it down to probably sixteen. Then we had it down to about six, and then we gave up and called that, because we caught that issue we're talking about. I said, that's it. Called them people. They came last Thursday, because that's.
We can't have anymore.
You can't have that.
Can't have any more of these.
They came down, they went through everything. We sat here, we didn't even take lunch. We ate, because he wanted to keep going, because he needed to leave, and so did I that day. We got it done. What, we spent seven hours with him?
Yes.
And he was very good. This guy was new, from the time I had before. Much better. He, uh, explained everything, went re- recreated new accounts for all of us, so I'm, I'm ninety-eight percent sure.
And this also would address the sprinkler issues from.
Yeah, it should've got all them too.
Earlier, earlier, okay.
There was ma, many codes that were in there from years back. I mean, we're talking way back into two thou, early two thousands that weren't right. Took all them out, got them all changed.
I'm writing it down, ninety-eight percent.
It was a good day.
It was a good day.
The time that they spent with them.
That guy was awesome. I sent him a review also, because he was that good, so.
So we're, we're, we're really confident in all these issues, like with the church and the school, this is never gonna happen again?
Can't say never, because I talked to other.
It can happen two percent.
Right, two percent, right.
I talked to a couple other Public Works people, and I mentioned what happened. Then I talked to the meter people, both of them, I did. She was not surprised. It happens all the time.
Yeah.
A lot, because.
Theirs problems are pretty small compared to most of the cities.
He said it was really small, because he said what happens is codes get entered, the soft, reader software and the really hot software have to talk to each other. You have changeover in staff. Somebody fifteen years ago could've put something in wrong, it doesn't get looked at, because the bill's automatically. That's the good thing about technology. The bad thing is stuff gets missed. If you don't call, say, hey, I got a high bill.
And if people don't move.
Yep, it just continues to go.
So you tell me never move, perfect.
Yeah, I never spent a lot of time looking through the meters, but now this month, and next month, and the next month, I have to spend just to make sure we got these cleared up. Have to look at a lot more.
Well, I mean, you can only go forward, right?
Right.
So I, I think.
What do you think, Lori? I'm confident.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I guess I, I'm, I guess I'll make a motion to refund the school.
All right, we'll second.
You wanna do it in one lump sum or?
Hey, what do you guys think? I mean, if we have the money, we have the money.
I think one lump sum. Makes it count easier.
I didn't realize it was a separate deal, so, yeah.
All right.
Undeb sep and refund school all in one, or is it two separate things?
All in one, right?
All in one.
All in one payment?
Yeah, it would be one check.
Yeah. I didn't realize. We had next.
All right, all in favor of paying the school back their water bill refund? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next thing is appoint council position to vacancy.
There were two applications in your packets, and that was all that was received. When I talked to Bob, he said, if you were looking for more, you can, you can continue on, go one more month to see if you get more. Um, he just said that it has to continue moving forward. You can't just stop and say, we'll do it next year for March or something like that. And this will be for complete till next year, so it's one year term. And one month if you appoint to it.
So the people that are pointing around, he's gonna be on for a year?
A year and one month, they would finish out Chris's.
Any appointment like this, it's until the next regular election and that will be next year, there was not one this year.
Are either, anybody here? Applicants, is anybody here? Oh, and you are?
Anthony.
Anthony, okay.
And just to confirm, you're the only individual? No one else, okay, just checking. I, I think to me showing up shows a lot.
Yeah, either a pointer.
I think uh, might as well hit the ground running, I'll, I'll make a motion to point Anthony Holst as the. Chris's position? To fulfill. The remaining term of. Yes, what you said.
I'd like to wait a month, so.
Thanks. I'm, I'm kind of in agreeance with Janine there, I'd like to see um, if. There are any more applicants, um, and uh, you know, I commend Anthony for showing up.
I do too.
Cuz I, I really, really appreciate that. So I would like to wait until December to see if we get any more applicants. Um, this news article will go out, hopefully, uh, they'll say, hey, we're still looking for applicants.
On the website.
Yeah.
So, I, 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 I just have a quick question, so, so I guess where I'm struggling is like, can we just say there are two seats available?
Can't do it until he's asked.
Not until Joe's actually gone, gone. All right, so, um. Make the motion, uh, Michael said yes, Janine said no, I said no. Guess I told.
The motion fails and then motion us to repost it.
Uh, get a motion to repost it in December.
And, and thank you for coming, it's not, it's not personal.
I'll make a motion to repost the um, city council position vacancy.
I'll second.
All in favor? Pose. All right. Yeah. So come back next month.
Now, just maybe stated, do you want, you don't want him to reply and the other one?
No, no, nobody needs to reply, we'll keep these.
These applications are still. Nope, nope, okay.
All right, um, that covers all new business, we have no old business, um, clerk report? Anything to add to that? Public Works?
I'm only gonna talk about the top item. Quickly, so, I don't know how familiar you are that, that, that we have the well back here, the emergency backup. Had ISU come in here because I'm kinda concerned that they shut it off in two thousand nine, hardly ever ran it, ever. I was always told that it had high iron, here's the water from the well, so I brought it with. They came, we let it run for an hour and that's the good water, so. No, that's the water, I have to save this sample, they told me to show it to me, yeah, cuz I had them come out, cuz our bathroom toilet got the water in it and it's. This is the backup well, this is the one with the generator, so if we lose power. No, the water has no bacteria, it's just full of iron.
I drink it.
You won't have to eat liver.
No more, no more iron pills for you.
Like the rest of the year, right?
So they were here for most of the day, we did many tests on it, we tested the hand bridge, all that. Kinda ran down what it would look like to put in a filter, we had it while running, it wasn't too bad, they wanted to let it run for an hour before we got a test. At forty minutes, the water started turning yellow, so we kept it running, kept taking samples, kept samples, finally it got so bad, they're like, you gotta shut it down. Cuz it, it won't even sample anymore, it's too high. And they were concerned at that point, it was gonna get into the system, even though we were bleeding it out at the hydrant, so all the water, except for our public workshop. Went out through the waterway. So they, they said, don't get back to me, last week they got back to me, they're like, yeah, you probably don't wanna use that well for anything. Because even in an emergency situation, you turn it on, you're in a wreck, everybody's plumbing. I mean, look at the water, it's awful. And then they actually did like a mock filter of what it would be like if the water was normal, to clean it out, so they can filter it, there is a way to get it out. However, the thing that puts us in kind of a bind now is that's our only backup. If we lose power for a long period of time, we got no water, especially if the water tower is low when we lost power. Cuz we go through on average ninety to a hundred thousand gallons a day, hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty in the summer. You're not gonna have a lot of time to. Before we have to ration out the water, I mean, obviously, something like that happens, we would go around and say, hey, please, try to use as little as possible. We don't have a lot of industry, other than egg finders, we'd be like, yeah, don't spray it. So anyway, we already had a sanitary inspection earlier this year and that was one of the things that was mentioned on the M D H report. Was we don't have a backup generator in case of an emergency. So worked with rural water myself, we did apply for a implementation grant for fifteen thousand dollars. To put a generator up at the well number one, the main one we use. I guess what I'm asking is, I'd like to make it a priority to move forward, I did get some quotes. For a new generator to be installed, hooked up, it's twenty weeks lead time minimum to get one. And it came in at around forty-eight thousand. So, we won't know if we're gonna get this grant money until after the first of the year, I'm asking if I can maybe start moving forward. And getting some plans done to get something up there, so if we do have a power failure or something, if we can at least run the well. So. I don't like to see, have to spend that kind of money on it because we have a generator here, but they don't recommend us using this one at all cuz they're afraid that the. Pipes are gonna break and fall into the well, then we'll be drilling a new one.
So one question is, what's the cost to move the generator from here up there?
That I didn't ask because if you take this one out, the fire department has no backup power. Cuz the only thing that generator does is run that backup well, which they determine doesn't have enough power to start it anyway, so really it only runs the fire department.
Oh, that generator is also run the line to the fire department?
Yeah, so if you take that one out, the fire department has no water, no power. That's why that, that's why that option wasn't put out there.
Interesting, that's odd.
The only thing that generator powers is the fire department, nothing else.
During an emergency?
Yep, that's it, it doesn't empower this building, it doesn't empower the public workshop, it doesn't empower the well cuz you can't use the well anymore. The only thing it runs is the fire department. And that's how it was set up, I mean, it's been that way forever, since two thousand eight or two thousand nine. So, what I'm recommending is, you know, we consider at least. Getting some sort of generator system, either natural gas or diesel, I had both priced off the state contract, so that's the lowest.
Obviously, there's a gas line.
There's a gas line there and Kyle and I were there and looked at it, so it would work, but so far the diesel generator has been a little cheaper to get. So that's why I threw that one in there. This well here, ISU recommended, I didn't dive too far into it, they said, the first thing we should do is pull the well. That's a conversation for a work meeting when we have more time because pull the well is gonna be seven hundred feet deep. If we have to pull it, you have to pull all the well pipe, if the pipe's fine or bad, we replace the pipe, if the casing's bad, then we really have to ask ourselves, what are we gonna do?
You're sleeve it or you gotta install a.
And then you're still gonna have to install a filter system, chemical, plus we found out that a backwash system. You know, flush out about seven to eight hundred gallons a minute, that's not gonna work, the sewer lines aren't big enough to, it'll flood the sewer plant. So then we're gonna have to put in a.
A basin.
Basin, yep, so getting that well started, just a preliminary look at it's gonna cost a lot of money, so it isn't gonna happen overnight, we just. Don't have the funds, I did work with Reese just in the last, since this Monday. He found a grant that we can apply for, he recommends, I told him we should move forward with that, we gotta work with seed on that too. That would be to try to get some information on that, maybe get started working on it, but.
Who drilled that well originally? McCarthy?
Teen, tha- is it Thine, Teen, Seen well company, Seen.
Okay, yep, I've heard.
There's not a lot of, there's a lot of manuals in there, but there's not a lot of other information on that one.
So well number one is the one up by the ice rink, huh?
Yep, that's the one we use every day.
And that does, that has no generator?
That has nothing, no, it didn't even have a monitoring system on its toes here, when we added that new pipe and meter, so. There's no generator on that one at all, so what they would do, Chris, essentially is they pull a pour slab, put it in a, it would be all contained. Inside of a.
It'd be in a small shed, similar generator farm, just a lot smaller.
Yeah, it would be outside fifty feet from the, or however many feet it has to be from where the well is, so probably. Towards where that.
The horseshoe pits.
Horseshoe pits are, yeah, depending on if it's gas or natural, natural gas or diesel.
Are these generators like the size of a car?
They're like the trailer motor generators that we have at the island.
Yeah, there's.
Be like that cat or the dude some that they have.
This one wouldn't be as big as.
I'm assuming you'd need what?
I sent it, I, I attached the quote, did you get it? Cuz I guess I didn't see it, but I have it on my phone. I think it's a one ten.
You know, our chances of getting a grant are like zero.
Pretty good.
Oh, really?
Yep.
This, it was a ten percent match.
It's ten percent. This one is pretty good. I think this, this grant, cuz we already received, there's two, this, the fifteen thousand dollars is one, then there's a matching grant that we applied for through rural water. We already got ten thousand two years ago for the same improvements to our well cuz we're in need cuz of our nitrates.
Okay, so the rural water is ten, right?
Fifteen.
Oh, fifteen.
The other grant that Reese is applying for, that one I didn't tou- touch on cuz it's ten percent.
Yeah, but he, yeah, he said if he, they need to do an estimate of seventy to eighty and it'll cost us seven to eight thousand.
So Reese is applying for both of them?
This one I already applied for, the second one Reese is gonna apply for.
Oh, Reese is gonna.
Or me, one of the two.
So.
Does he has, he has some, he's on the water commission, right?
He's a consultant, yeah, engineer.
So, what would our approximate price be that we would have to pay if both grants, we got both grants?
So let's, let's just talk about the generator one first.
Yes.
If we receive the Point Source Implementation Grant, which we're not gonna know until January, that, that one I feel, I can say we feel confident on other ones too, we didn't get them. If we get that one, it would be around sixty thousand. And I'm just using high numbers for the installing the thing, cuz you have to get an electrician in there to wire it, they haven't looked at it because I don't want to call them. Spend the money if this is something you don't even wanna talk about. Forty-five thousand is gonna cost us approximately to put it in with that grant money, it could be less, it could be more, cuz I have not had any electrician look at. The boxes, the panels inside the well, cuz if you call them to come look, they will charge you a service call, more than likely.
So this forty-eight is with if we get the fifteen?
That's before the, that's if you put it in right now, Chris, forty-eight thousand for that without the fifteen thousand.
Okay, so we're like.
That's just for the generator alone, nothing else.
Right, right, right.
Yep.
I mean, that fifteen would probably cover the installation.
Yeah, that's why I wrote underneath the forty-eight thousand, five to ten thousand for installation.
So we're looking at fifty thousand dollars?
Yep, and it could be more, I mean, probably around fifty thousand by the time you take the fifteen thousand out of it. Get it installed and up and running.
Did, didn't we tell you last year to stop spending money?
I'm all for it. Yeah, that's why we talked about it, but then Minnesota Rural Water contacted me about something today and they're like. We just had a conversation, he's like, you should uh. We're gonna send you some stuff for you to work on and then bring it back to the December meeting, that's why I was like, let's just tailor it, so.
But you're confident we can get the fif- at least the fifteen K?
I would say.
One you've gotten before, right?
Well, I got ten thousand for the nitrate issue.
I guess at this point in time, it really doesn't matter whether we get it or not.
Right, we need something cuz we have nothing.
At minimum, could we install uh, just a plug on the, plug on the outside of the wall? And then go with uh, um, Minmore?
We, I had just talked to our electrician, he thought he would go look at that too.
Minmore is Minnesota warrant sounds for something, but basically it's mutual aid. So, let's say there's a disaster here, we lose power, uh, you put in a claim with Minmore, which we are a member of, correct?
Yeah, we're a member.
Yeah, and basically, you know, you can ask that, oh, we need a generator to power the water point, we need a back truck to come help with the sewer or something like that. So it's basically mutual aid between cities, uh, that you kind of belong, I don't know. So, in essence, to say you've read, who has like twenty generators could chip one in or, let's say Rochester for instance, or, you know.
Somebody would help, I agree.
Yeah.
I, I would like to see one there.
That, that's the kind of the bare bones philosophy to get by, um, but you know, if we decide that. That could be a stepping stone because once we get that in, that, that would also mean we would have to switch gear in to actually put a generator in.
Well, can't you, don't they have these like generators on the trailers that at the uh?
Old like farm ones, you mean?
Well, the, where you get these uh, these dump trucks, like these state.
Yeah, yeah.
Auction places, don't they have them there?
Sometimes they sell them, you just gotta watch.
You just don't know what you're getting.
Right. Well, I know where we have one, wait three years, just one at the sewer plant. Move it up there.
If you hook it up to the sheriff's truck.
All right, well, I, I mean, it's hard to talk about these things in meetings like this when you have one, so I just wanted you really to be aware of how bad the water was. And that we're really kind of now. Doesn't keep me up at night because obviously. But still, that's, this many people, as, for as many houses and residents we have, to not have any backup generator. Especially when we took the water tower out of service, that could have really been bad because I was always told that well would be fine, you just turn it on and let it run, the generator runs everything.
For forty minutes?
Well, I don't even know if you'd get forty minutes out of it anymore because when the generator people were here, they were like, have you ever ran the well? I said, no, they looked at the numbers on the motor, it's an eighty horse motor, and what the well is, they're like, they, they probably wouldn't even, you would probably flip the switch and kill the damage.
What do you think it would cost to get an electrician in there to put a plug on the building?
Oh, not that much.
I, and I'm only saying that. And I'm only saying that as, we have to have something in plan or in, in motion for that. So, like Michael said, this Minmore or even or Sunbelt or something to, to rent. Right, to rent one for the time being, um, I mean, I would like to wait until like December. Just because the surplus, public surplus, to see where we're at with that.
I'm game with that, we'll get a plug in there cuz then we can.
But I would say, like, you know, why don't we just get a plug installed?
Yeah.
And have that. I mean, we're moving forward with it, I, I know it, so, um, and it's worst case scenario, we have to rent one.
Oh, somebody would have one, like you said, the worst part is if it would be a terrible ice storm.
Yeah.
One of us would have to drive up the Sunbelt and get it.
Have, have, I'm gonna remember it.
It's easy. So, I would, that, that's my recommendation is, um, get a, get, get an outlet, put in whatever that takes. And then wait till December to see how this uh, uh, surplus goes for this dump truck.
Yeah, I'm game with that, that will, if you wanna talk about. Yeah, I'm game with that. That, well, if you wanna talk about that, I got an email, they didn't get their new ones, so we're just gonna keep watching.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, they haven't, haven't gotten it still.
I mean, I know where the dump truck's at. You just gotta put a windshield and maybe, uh, I think it's missing six of the rear eight tires.
This one's nice. It's assy.
It's got a nice cap in it.
And another league oil everywhere. I don't have anything else really, that was my biggest thing.
I actually have one question for you. Um, so, the Good Hugh Christmas thing, that's the first week in December. You, you good with the streets and?
I'm never. They usually call this county, cause it's a county.
Oh, that's right, that's.
But last year they called and they didn't even care, so I.
Oh, that's right.
I can't speak to the county, I don't know. You're supposed to get a permit. I guess, I guess they should probably call. I think they usually do.
But don't they stop, doesn't the permit have to go through Austin County?
Nah, none of that one. They'll probably call me and ask me if it's okay.
But two hours before.
But it's like two hours, so I don't think it's even so much.
No, it's, it's, yeah.
Pretty simple. Yep. The only thing we have to do is. Get the stuff out of there, I guess. And we don't even do that, they come get it all. It's all stored in the shop. And I don't know if they're bringing it back, because mentioned they might not.
Did we get a liquor license for them?
They, they don't serve liquor.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they do, they serve like, uh.
That beer, I always get some.
They always serve like spiked hot chocolate or something.
Yeah, but that's in the bar.
No, that's outside.
But that's county street.
No one came in, okay. They always serve like, isn't it hot wine or whatever? Here we go, there we go, I couldn't remember what it was. Some weird wine stuff.
Beer.
Yeah. Okay, I, I thought maybe it already came through and I forgot about it. Okay.
Alright, we'll see. Uh, anything else for you, Jason?
I don't have anything.
Lisa?
Um, I just got an update from the cell tower guy. He finally replied to me. He says the only update I have is a client is looking at a different land owner. Land owner to go forward with at a better location.
Perfect.
Perfect.
But it doesn't mean all the stars roll line, but if it doesn't, I'll look back, I'll reach out to you again. So he just, uh, said that yesterday. Uh, the bonding presentation, I went down to Wausau and met with the housing side of the legislature bonding to try and get us more money. One of the engineers came with me, we hopped on a bus in Wausau and spoke to them and they, they drove away, went on to the next one. So we did, we did, we now met with both the House and the Senate Bonding Committee to try to get things started before we start going back up there again in January. To try to give money for the wastewater treatment plant.
I, I went to the one with you and I felt, I felt actually really good at that one. Best I've ever.
The Wausau one, uh, went very well. Uh, the, the lead engineer spoke.
So that was the lead engineer through Zongro.
Yeah, it's a sanitaryistic field.
Yeah. Yeah.
He spoke at both of them.
One of the comments when I was coming off the bus was somebody said, I really like this project.
Oh my gosh.
So.
And the one you and I attended in Rochester, in person, that one, they actually went to the site.
They did, that's the first.
That's the first.
And wanted to know where it was.
The site's open, you know, you can try it.
They've never gone, they've never been that interested in that. Jocinski was a real, he was not a proponent, but now he's. Once you see is the one it saves in money per city, per, for the Minnesota Police Control, everybody, labs.
And, and I don't, and.
The savings is unbelievable.
Trying to push that they gave us a ten million to buy the land, are you just gonna to let it go? You know, we bought the land. It's there. Um, if they don't try to fund it, that was a waste, essentially.
Right.
We're gonna have to build it anyway, so.
And, we also got an email, Chad and I got, are going to a meeting next week, they had the final plans of it all.
Yeah, if you're still moving forward.
Really moved forward. Office, I mean, they're gonna go over everything with us.
Just on our side, not. It's gonna get built, it's just whether it's, it's gonna get.
Whether we're gonna get money, yep, so.
Um, closing on the sale of the field, we just, we have some documents to sign, uh, to the school. It's happening this week. We just got the documents on Monday, maybe able to finalize the closing for them to take ownership of the field.
Nice small field, eh?
That, yeah. Uh, the SEMCRA, just an FYI, we noticed that we would get big checks to them. They're done now. There won't be no more incoming for us to pass through the money out to SEMCRA for their, uh, Department of Economic and Development grants that we've been part of. The last disbursement came, so you won't see them anymore. That's just an FYI.
So SEMCRA's just done in general?
We, it comes through us.
It's just a pass.
And we write them a check. The state gives it to us and we pass it on.
So now where's the money gonna go directly to them?
Nope, they're done. The project's done. The grant's done, they dispersed all their money and there's.
This was that, that big one where they update your home?
Yes.
Yep.
They picked a certain amount of people.
It was awesome, innocent.
Yep.
And so now they, do they just pick like new communities?
Yep.
Okay, I was gonna say, are these people just like out of a job?
And I, and from, from, from the sounds of it, there was not a whole lot of. Yeah, because nobody, I mean, it was, it was essentially free money for your home to upgrade.
As long as you lived there for ten years, it was free, yeah.
Yeah, you remember, cause I think that was.
I tried applying.
Yeah.
I made too much money.
So that, that is done and I just got an email today also from the Minnesota City that our property casual rates from extra will be decreasing. Decreasing by an average of two percent. The workers' compensation rates will see a reduction of twenty-five percent.
No, five percent, don't worry, thanks.
Uh, that is all I have.
Alright. Council comments? I got nothing.
Yeah, nothing.
Nope, sorry.
Uh, mayor comments, I got nothing. Who else? Nothing. Alright, uh, good motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carried, we need to adjourn.
No, they were not, not yesterday. Yesterday they were in Gansburg.